This is another just a awesome, awesome partnership we've been working on for several years with the Charleston Business District. And we've, we've hit a milestone with substantial infrastructure improvement. Now, it's not big like our multimillion dollar projects that we get into where we improve sidewalks and crossings. And Quincy Square. But this is an investment that we carved out of the general fund to prep that wall, get a sealant coat on, and then do an exterior coat to get it ready for art. And so as we have this art community that's emerging all over the city, this is just area where we're going to highlight showcase some of our artists and some of the creativity we have. Excuse me. So there's some bullets there and you can see what we did. And if you've walked under there, I hope you do, you'll notice a brand new sidewalk. You'll notice vegetation has been trimmed back and the paint job is really well done. And there was pressure washing that went into this. This is our city staff that did this. And so the, the community is busy raising money right now and putting out a call for artists. Next slide. All right, we had an electric hydrofoil ferry visit just recently. And I just wanted to highlight this and get you, kind of get you a look at technology that may be adopted in the future. And so there's just, there's some features about this, excuse me, that are, that are really cool. I think, I think one is the, the speed maneuverability and the wake. This wake is minimal and it fits a specific need we have here in the Bremerton to Seattle run to keep our wake low. And so there's, they've been touring around the region and they've stopped in Bremerton. I took a ride on it. I know other, other electeds were on different rides. It's a pollen season. The, it was other electeds, but the one I took on, I think we all got to see the bank turns, watch it accelerate, look at the wake, you know, the comfort level of a ride. And then just to, I believe that we have, there's a capability to get back and forth Seattle twice on one battery charge. And so I'm going to verify that here real quick, get you some. So the passenger and so this was a 12 passenger electric hydrofoil right here. According to Artemis, it is building 150 passenger electric hydrofoil ferry in Belfast, Ireland, and has signed an agreement with Delta Marine in Tacoma to build more of them. And so that would be a local employer. The largest electric ferry would be able to make two round trips on the Bremerton Seattle route before needing to recharge its batteries, according to Artemis. And so this is the kind of technology we are looking at, at Kitsap Transit. We've already, we've already convened a meeting, very quick one, to discuss feasibility and future visioning. And this fits future visioning. Now, is this a, does that mean there's a contract? No, this is the research and development that goes into making decisions down the road. So it's just, but it is an example of always trying to improve service. And with the local manufacturer here, with the battery efficiency, with the, all of the other features I've described, we have, we have something that is a, requires a serious look. So it's exciting technology. Next slide. All right. How many are aware that the NCAA 2025 Men's Golf Championship at Gold Mountain Golf Course will be occurring? Now, for this one, it is just the West Coast Regional. And I say just, this is a big deal. So it's not a big moneymaker, but it does bring us national recognition and exposure. And not every course earns this, this right to host a tournament. So this is, this hats off to the hard team at Gold Mountain for continuing to produce quality product and that is known nationally. And so we're proud of this. I wanted to highlight this effort, this, this Bremerton jewel and bring it out so the community knows what's happening out at our, our wonderful Gold Mountain Golf Course. Next slide. So many of you have heard the restoration plan that was in place has actually been accelerated. And I wanted to share the good news that the Bremen Seattle route will now return to the pre pandemic two boat schedule starting now on Sunday, June 15th. So this is just awesome news. There's, there's great work all the way around. And it starts at the governor's office. So the leadership starts at the governor's office to get this, this, these routes restored back to pre pandemic levels at the speed that we're seeing it happen. Next slide. That is it. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mayor. Now we will go to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Revulowski. First on the consent agenda are the following items. A, claims and check register, approval of the following checks and electronic fund transfers. One, check numbers 410-737 through 410-954 and EFT numbers V43352 through V43528 in the grand total amount of $4,725,473.40. Two, regular payroll for pay period ending April 15th, 2025 in the amount of $1,119,269.53. Three, regular payroll payout for pay period ending April 15th, 2025 in the amount of $7,326.31. Four, retiree payroll for pay period ending April 30th, 2025 in the amount of $38,881.27. B, minutes of council meeting, April 16th, 2025. C, minutes of study session, April 23rd, 2025. D, interlocal cooperative RAVE, emergency notification and alerting system user agreement with Kitsap County Department of Emergency Management. And E, resolution number 3395, an intergovernmental agreement with the Suquamish Tribe to design a habitat restoration plan for the Gorse Creek Fish Rearing Facility area. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
If any member of the public wishes to speak to any of the consent agenda items, we ask only that you state your name for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Does any member of the public wish to comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to the council for a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, I call for the question.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Houghland?
Yes.
Good now?
Yes.
Mochler?
Yes.
Revulowski?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next up is public recognition. As indicated on the agenda, public recognition provides an opportunity for attendees to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda. This is not interactive and the council is here to listen to your concerns and questions. There will be no public comments accepted via Zoom tonight unless prior arrangements were made through the city clerk by calling 360-473-5323 at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. Were there any calls?
There were not.
And also, seeing as this is election season, comments cannot be made about any of the current elections going on. Thank you. Okay, with that, I open public recognition. Please just state your name.
Hi, I'm Jocelyn. I'm with the Bremerton Prayer Walk and Rock the Block group. And I'd just like to come in here and give you guys an update on what we're seeing as we go about and doing our work down, down on the streets. And, and I, what a mess we have down there right now. And, and I get that we have to get a mess before it gets better. That's what I was doing with my house this weekend was making it a mess before it got better. But one of the things that we're seeing when we have such a mess is that it's so chaotic down there. And then the enforced, what I have been seeing is with this chaotic nature of people having to move, not having a place to congregate, so that individuals like us, so that groups like us can go down and make sure people are getting fed, make sure people have the bare necessities. It makes it really difficult. We've now had to do like a caravanning type thing where we're going around and looking for people. It's my favorite thing to do to go up and down the alleys. We've got some of the best alleys here in town, but it's hard. It's hard work. And, 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 and one of the things that's happening is like always, like I say, is I've still got that same marine on the streets that we can't get him into treatment because there's no place for him to go to detox because he's got these medical issues. He can't go get the medical issues taken care of because he's not clean and he's on the streets. And so it's a vicious cycle and we've got, we've got individuals that are screaming for help that we can't provide. And in the meantime, we've got people pushing him about so that we can't see him. So that it just becomes one of those things, again, what I do in my house. If you can't see it, it doesn't exist. And that's, not only do these people exist, but the problem exists and it's being exacerbated by us pretending it doesn't exist. And I'm not saying that people are just putting, but the resources are not there. So we've got to have a more compassionate approach till we get the resources that are available. The other thing is we're coming into this season of lots of people on the streets. We really need to get a bathroom down there. We really need to get a place for people to be able to. We've, we've seen it happen. Rock the Block has had it happen. We've seen it in other places where these porta potties do not, do not happen to have all the issues that people throw up in the air to prematurely limit us being able to do it. And we really need to get a place because it's, 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 it's a matter of not only human dignity, but it's also a matter of public safety because of, of the issues that we have. So with that, I would just say, just to continue to, to lean on not enforcing this anti camping administration so harshly by moving people about. And that's one of the things is this anti camping ordinance that was passed is being used above and beyond what it was written for to move these people about. And it's just, it's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking. And anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jack Reed and I live in Bremerton. In my almost two years of living in a home backing directly onto Trenton Avenue at Jacobson Boulevard, I have not seen the Bremerton Police Department pull anyone over for speeding on this stretch of Trenton or for failing to stop at the four way stop sign at East 11th and Trenton. That doesn't mean to say that enforcement isn't happening. In trying to learn more about enforcement activity on this stretch of road, I have asked the city for records. In response, I have been told by the Bremerton Police Department that traffic enforcement activity is not logged. My own use of my speed radar gun sitting in my car on Trenton routinely shows speeds on this residential road with a 25 mile per hour speed limit of over 35 miles per hour. I think that the highest speed I captured over two one hour sessions was 43 miles per hour. Certainly vehicles are going faster than that. In my short time of living in Bremerton, beautiful city, sadly, I'm learning that speeding is an issue across the city and that it has been a long-term problem. Respectfully, I urge the council to seek to increase traffic enforcement. And enforcement is only one tool. I understand that the Public Works Department is drafting an update to the city's traffic calming regulations and that they will be coming to the Public Works Committee soon. That's great news as there can be engineering solutions to address the speeding problems. Through increased enforcement and implementing traffic calming measures, let's change people's minds and behaviors on speeding in Bremerton. I'm leaving my two one hour recordings speeds on Trenton for the Chair of the Public Works Committee to review. It's not scintillating review, but thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public recognition? All right, I'm closing public recognition. Thank you.
We have no general business items, so the next item on the agenda would be seven public hearing. Seven A, public hearing to obtain comment on the 2024 Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations. Our presenter tonight is line manager Garrett Jackson.
All right, good evening, council. It's been a long and winding road. We're here to start the process for adopting the comprehensive plan. Thank you. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold a public hearing where council will take public comment. The council will then consider in deliberations that will occur at study sessions on May 14th and 28th. An additional public hearing is scheduled for June 4th where council is anticipated to adopt the comprehensive plan and implementing development regulations. So this is that long and long and winding road I was referencing. We started this process in 2022 and it culminated in the Planning Commission providing their recommendation to the city council at the April 21st public hearing. Their recommendation to adopt the comprehensive plan and implementing development standards. This is a bit of the outreach that we performed over the years, starting with bremerton2044.com. This has been kind of ground zero to provide information to the public. There's videos, all current documents, upcoming meetings. Those are all on bremerton2044.com. And we've been letting the public know from the beginning of this process. Please keep checking in with our webpage for current information. We've had over 25 Planning Commission meetings about the comprehensive plan. They've done a lot of heavy lifting for the comp plan update. Thank you, Planning Commission. We've posted physical flyers at locations like parks and libraries around, around the city to let people know and planning commission meetings were going to occur. There's a map there of all of our locations. And Karen Beavers with the Bremerton School District has been gracious enough to share those flyers on Peachjar, which said it was sent out to Bremerton School District parents. We sent postcards to every residence and business in the city of Bremerton requesting that they participate in our environmental impact statement process. We've had city council district digests, individual documents that break down on a district by district level how these proposed changes might affect your neighborhood. And that was followed up with council district meetings where we had physical meetings where we just described proposed changes and how that might affect individual neighborhoods for each council district. All in all, we've had over 100 public events that we've attended for the comprehensive plan, whether it be a parade, a farmer's market, a pork commission meeting, planning commission. It's been a lot of outreach. Just to go over the remaining schedule, the council is aware, but if anybody at home would like to participate. We have the public hearing tonight and the two study sessions on the 14th and 28th. And then that June 4th public hearing where with the anticipated adoption of the comprehensive plan and first phase of development regulations. The Planning Commission will be considering a second phase of development regulations for the Planning Commission to consider. So the comprehensive plan review, I'm sure the council has heard this enough times, but just to make sure the members of the public are informed. Our local comprehensive plan needs to conform to several different jurisdictional layers of oversight. And that starts with the Growth Management Act from Washington State and also the Vision 2050, our guiding document from our planning partners at the Puget Sound Regional Council. And lastly, the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council, which is made up of all the jurisdictions in Kitsap County and their guiding document, countywide planning policies. Our comprehensive plan needs to conform with all of those jurisdictional layers of authority while also demonstrating that we have the capacity for proposed population job increases. We're, we're slated to grow to just under 64,000 people and just over 58,000 jobs by the year 2044. So we have done quite a bit of review with the city council previously, and that's all on bremerton2044.com. We're not going to go into an exhaustive review, a review of that. But we would like to invite any member of the public to visit the webpage. We have each element, land use, housing, economic development element, transportation, city services, and the environmental element, all available via video on, on the webpage. Also available on the webpage and in your city council packet are our final draft documents. So it's not only the comprehensive plan documents, but also implementing development regulations. There are just a, a slight update. The transportation element appendix had a slight update today to add some dollar amounts to some capital facilities. So anybody wanting to check that out, transportation appendix has been updated online. Development regulations. Okay, so the comprehensive plan is large guiding document. The development regulations are the nuts and bolts on how we accomplish the goals of the comprehensive plan. We were asked for kind of a general elevator type talk the last council session. So just as an overview that we've provided in the past, the areas that you see here on the map that have some color to them are areas that are expected to have a development regulation change for height increase or density increase or both. These dashed circles here represent high capacity transit stations that may be built in the future by Kitsap Transit via their long range planning document. And we'll go into the specifics for each zone in a moment. So for the downtown sub area plan, this is our downtown regional center. It's recognized by our regional planning partners at PSRC as being responsible for absorbing population and job growth, not just locally, but regionally. And accordingly, our development regulations are proposed to be updated to reflect that regional responsibility. So the downtown sub area plan, we have updated to be in compliance with PSRC centers criteria and an increase in height for this larger pink zone that you see here on the screen to a maximum of 80 feet with no maximum density. This took the aggregation of several existing zones that were previously underlaid in the pink area. And there's also provisions for increased urban tree canopy and also increased public open space on the waterfront overlay. So that at some point in the future, as these properties develop along the water on Washington Avenue, they'll add a public trail that will one day lead from the Bremerton Marina all the way up to Evergreen. The Puget Sound Industrial Center Sub Area Plan. So this is our other regionally recognized center, but only for jobs. Residential isn't permitted in this zone because it's for industrial uses. Once again, we have updated this plan to be consistent with PSRC centers criteria. Development regulation updates are consistent with a market study that was done in 2023 where outreach was done to property owners asking what we can do with the sub area plan to encourage development. We removed some duplicative requirements for stormwater streets and other housekeeping measures. And the capital facilities plan is, is in process of being updated. So the Bay Vista Sub Area Plan. Bay Vista is largely developed with a few remaining vacant lots. Changes are to allow for mixed use in the village commercial zone. So you'll see here up on the screen, bluish colored zone. That's the village commercial zone. Right now it allows us for, it doesn't allow for any residential. The proposal is to allow for mixed use with a minimum density of 15 dwelling units per acre and a maximum of 65. We have letters of support from the two property owners in these zones of vacant land supporting the change. And then some mapping updates to account for final plating. When the initial sub area plan zoning map was, was developed, it was more of an artist's rendition. This reflects the parcels that have been planted since that time. East Park Sub Area Plan. So this is kind of a similar story in regards to plating and development over time. In that the current sub area plan doesn't reflect the Madrona Forest there on the west of the sub area. And so that's been incorporated into the mapping. And once again, the East Park Sub Area Plan is nearly fully built out with the final project being developed right now on Lower Wheaton Way. You can go and check that out. But these, this new map would reflect that plating process in the Madrona Forest. The Bremerton Municipal Code Title 20, otherwise known as the zoning code. So a lot of changes proposed for the zoning code. Starting with unit lot subdivision, this is in our subdivision code. Unit, and, and this is a specialty type of subdivision where development standards like setbacks and development coverage for impervious surfaces would apply to the parent lot, but not individual unit lots. So this is supposed to be helpful for the creation of middle housing like townhomes. You might see how row housing, this would work very well on while also maintaining that overall development coverage standards. It's a subdivision type for nine or fewer lots because it's meant for infill housing. And this, this process could be started before, during, or after the development process. So it's kind of interesting in that regard also. Middle Housing Code. This is a, this is a big one. It's been coming down the pipe for quite some time. There are some mandates from Washington State on implementing missing middle housing to encourage the housing row throughout the state and in the city of Bremerton. This does not apply to mixed use or commercial zones that have higher densities. Development standards of the underlying zones still apply. So if you have a 35 foot, foot height limit, you can't go beyond that just because you're middle housing. Any lot in the subject zone would be permitted to have four missing, excuse me, four middle housing dwelling units if one of those units is provided as affordable housing for a period of 50 years. That requires a notice to title on the property. Increased densities do not apply to lands covered by critical areas, their buffers, or the shoreline jurisdiction. So the shoreline jurisdiction being from the ordinary high watermark 200 feet back. Covenant's conditions and restrictions of existing lots remain in force. So if you have CCNRs for your HOA, those stay in place. But any, any subdivisions or CCRs that would occur after the adoption of this ordinance are, are, are ordinance would supersede it. Lighting regulations. This has been very popular in regards to keeping light pollution out of the night sky. And we have updated BMC 2044 to have lighting, that lighting designed to prevent light from trespassing into the sky and adjacent properties. We currently have an ordinance for light trespassing into adjacent properties. It's been updated to reflect that night sky. Low density residential. So updates to LDR include middle housing and multifamily housing uses. Once again, we're really pushing for increased housing as we are in the housing crisis. Multifamily open space and design standards are also included and removing lot sizing requirements. So currently we have a minimum and maximum lot size in the low density residential zone. And that's more geared to single family housing. And as we're adding housing types of middle housing and multifamily, it no longer makes sense to have those lot size requirements. Medium density residential. So once again, adding those middle housing and multifamily housing uses. Also, once again, open space standards and design requirements for multifamily and removing lot sizing, similar uh and removing lot sizing similar to what happened uh was as proposed in LDR and and a maximum height of forty-five feet. Right now, the maximum height in uh medium density is thirty-five feet and in some cases conditionally allowed to forty-five. Uh, the proposal is to uh increase to forty-five feet uh for increased affordable housing uh outright. Thank you. Uh, and there are a number of other zoning code amendments um aimed at increasing housing stock. Uh, one in high density residential, uh, this is areas that are typically already having apartments uh that the minimum density be fifteen dwelling units per acre. That'll be a uh a standard throughout commercial and mixed use zones that's uh identified as the minimum for uh for uh assisting in transit oriented development. And a maximum height of sixty-five feet, which is supposed to enable uh wood frame construction over a concrete podium, uh, which is an economical um choice for constructing housing. Uh, very similar in the general commercial zone where a minimum density of fifteen dwelling units per acre is proposed with no maximum density. Uh, maximum height of sixty-five feet and that we would require mixed use. Uh, the district center core um uh adding a minimum density of thirty dwelling units per acre. Uh, it's already what's been identified previously in the comprehensive plan and that um developments that you have seen um are developed by the uh Blue Ridge Apartments, for instance, already developed at thirty dwelling units per acre. But it's just memorializing that in zoning code. Uh, and there are some other minor amendments uh in the downtown core zone in the Bremerton Municipal Code. Uh, we're proposing to repeal parking standards uh in the downtown sub area plan. That that there's a proposal to have no uh to have market based parking or no minimum parking requirements. And so it doesn't make sense to keep this section in the downtown core in the Title Twenty. Business Core in twenty seventy-four is currently referenced in the existing uh downtown sub area plan that would go away after the updated version is adopted. Uh, it is referenced nowhere else in any other document. So we're suggesting the repeal of the business core section because it uh is now irrelevant. Uh, the neighborhood business zone, um, we're we're uh proposing that uh density of fifteen dwelling units per acre uh for the reasons specified earlier. And the institutional zone, once again, that fifteen dwelling units per acre minimum. So those are the items that were under consideration uh for the public for tonight's public hearing. But for those in the audience uh that are interested in further participation, we have these items that will be considered by the Planning Commission at a May public hearing. So if anybody in the audience would like to continue to participate, please come to that May public hearing uh where we where proposal will be to add provisions for transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, indoor emergency shelters, and indoor facilities per RCW thirty-five twenty-one six eighty-three. Uh, these are all largely required by the state. Uh, permit family daycare as required once again by the state. Uh, co-living also required by the state of Washington. Uh, reuse of existing commercial buildings with residential uses, uh, once again, a requirement of the state. Uh, market driven minimum parking standards. So there's a proposal to remove minimum parking standards citywide uh in an effort to encourage affordable housing. So those uh parking standards now be market driven. Uh, neighborhood scale commercial uh uh in residential zones. So should there be a allowance for small commercial buildings, whether that's market or a restaurant in your neighborhood, uh, that will also be considered by the Planning Commission? And boundary line adjustment, we've been working with a local surveyor um on refining our BLA regulations to make that process a little smoother. Uh, that'll be also um available for the Planning Commission to consider. And then in the second half of twenty twenty-five, this planning commission will be considering some additional updates. Uh, one to the landscaping code. Um, we're going to be looking at at ways to increase our urban tree canopy um and also to ensure conformance with our uh BMC fifteen oh four stormwater. So our stormwater code needs to be updated uh to account for some new state requirements for vegetation preservation. We want to make sure that our eventual landscaping code is in lockstep with stormwater requirements from the state. Critical area ordinance. So the critical area ordinance uh regulates such critical areas as wetlands, um, critical uh aquifer recharge areas and uh others. And we will be updating that to include uh updated definition section, increased tribal notification, cultural resource protection, and riparied buffers. Uh, the shoreline master plan would also need to be updated to allow uses that are stipulated in the comprehensive plan. Uh, and we also want to uh increase tribal notification and revise standards uh for cultural resource protection. And once again, that the purpose of tonight's meeting, uh, there is no action anticipated for this meeting. It's purely for the uh city council to take public comment um that council will then use for further deliberations at future study sessions. Thank you.
Thank you. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comment only and no action is anticipated. No gavel, I'm using my phone. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Is there anybody online? Okay, seeing no comments, I close the public hearing. Counsel reports. This is an opportunity for council members to provide an update on any issues or events taking place in their district, announce any events they've recently attended or planned to attend, and to speak on any other city related topics. Since this is the first council meeting of the month, we will start with District One Counselor Jennifer Chamberlain.
Hi, thank you. I think I have some slides, I have slides and pictures. Okay, let's see what's up first because I threw some stuff together for Christine. Okay, we had our Earth Day uh Stephenson Canyon uh stewardship group. We uh pulled some Japanese knot root, knotweed. Oh gracious, I forgot the name of it. Uh, away from uh behind the greenhouses. Um, you can go through the next couple of pictures. Um, oh, there is that it? Oh, there, oh, it's a little out of order. Okay. Uh, let's take a look at our Littlest Volunteer. Look at that, look at that dude. He was cutting back. He did, I think he did more work than all of us combined, to be honest. Um, he did a lot of stick breaking and um you can go ahead. Is it gonna have another? As okay, um, there were a couple of other pictures um and maybe we'll have opportunities to have more pictures too. Uh, so we're gonna start doing this on the fourth Sunday uh just through summertime from May until September. We'll do uh the stewardship group will meet. Um, the next one will be May twenty-fifth from three thirty to five. Uh, same location uh behind the or at the greenhouses off of Birch Street. All right, next slide. All right, so uh Mr. Jackson, I just didn't feel like you did enough outreach, okay? Um, so I decided to um expand uh the outreach and I did a little hike up in uh, I don't know if any, you know, there's a lot of people go up to this one. Um, but uh I decided to to take Bremerton uh survey up uh to North Bend. Maybe we'll get some Bremerton folks up there. But uh, no, good job on all the outreach that you did because I really do think that that you did some great outreach personally. Uh, we can go ahead and go to the next slide, but um, oh, there's that more?
That's it.
Um, okay, that's fine. Uh, and another thing, another part of the reason that um that I did this was not just to celebrate uh my forty-sixth trip around the sun, but um I wanted to do this hike and I've been doing hiking lately. Um, I've always been hiking, but um uh to celebrate um Fibromyalgia Month. So May uh twelfth is actually Awareness Day for Fibromyalgia. Um, and I wanted to just kind of honor that. Um, I don't know that I've talked to many of my colleagues about this, but I have fibro and um it's presented some challenges over the past few years. Um, and I just wanted to let folks out there know that have a chronic pain condition that I see you and um and uh I am you. So that's really all I have for district reports. Looking forward to May twenty-fifth when we're gonna get together again for our Stephenson Canyon Stewardship Group. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is District Two Council Member Denise Frye.
Thanks. Let's just skip over this, but I have changed that picture because you know, District Two is the place for affordable housing projects. So a few of us were able to attend the ribbon cutting for the new Wheaton Landing. Those of you who have been aware of that building on uh what I call SR three oh three because it is a reminder that it is a state highway, a very busy highway uh that has some bright yellow on it. Uh, that was actually purchased by Bremerton Housing Authority. And a few of us went to its ribbon cutting. It was a beautiful day. Uh, Jill Stanton, who rocks, uh, Bremerton Housing Authority, as you know, is our low income housing provider. Uh, and we're very fortunate that we have Bremerton Housing Authority. It's one of the most successful uh housing authorities in the country. Uh, and a lot of that now is due to Jill's finance background and also her compassion uh and her ability to convince her board uh to take some risks uh to make sure that we have affordable housing for people. Uh, so this is a twenty-four unit, a brand new market rate built uh housing complex. Uh, twelve of those uh will be filled by families who already have vouchers. The others will be filled with project based vouchers, which is great if you don't know the difference. Uh, those project based vouchers stay with that project and it affords the opportunity to house people that haven't yet uh gotten their Section Eight voucher. Uh, so it provides some flexibility for BHA uh and certainly provides more opportunity uh for those who are uh suffering from uh housing instability or actual homelessness. This is gonna serve families with kids in Bremerton School District. So Bremerton Housing Authority did a great job of creating this partnership with the school district. Uh, and if we move on, Dave, that's the ribbon cutting. That's just, you know, those of us who showed up get our picture taken. The mayor was there. Yeah, move on to the next slide. So this gives you, I think, a really good perspective on this project. You probably recognize the Wheaton Landing with the bright yellow. That's the housing project. Uh, behind it, there is View Ridge Elementary School. You'll see a playground there. That playground is not accessible after school uh to any families. So please don't try telling me that there's a playground in my district because there's not really. Um, but as you know, View Ridge is gonna be moved. Uh, new school is gonna be built and it's gonna be on the track uh uh kind of up and back uh adjacent to that area. Uh, and the community gym is there. Uh, the kids from Arman Jar will be coming over for to a temporary facility on that same site. They'll be bussed over. Uh, it's not safe to cross three oh three, which again, to those who think that people in my district can walk across the highway to go to Blueberry Park or to Lions Park, it's really not safe for families to do that. So it's gonna provide wonderful opportunities, I believe, for park space. Uh, and I really encourage some big thinking. Uh, you'll look back over here and there's the planned multimodal trail, which is now in planning documents in the city that will run all the way up from the bridge over across Sheridan up to Sylvan, across Sylvan on Almyra, clear up to Rydell. And we sure hope that Katie Walters is gonna make sure that that trail keeps on going through the county up into the north area of the county. Uh, so great things are happening there and there's some great synergy. Uh, if you look at all those trees at the back of that campus, that's my urban forest that I keep talking about. Uh, it's on a on a slope and on a very narrow piece uh of forest uh 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 not forest property, it's actually school project, school property, but uh it is an urban forest. I'm hoping that we can maintain that. And I'm convinced that we could add some park-like features along that multimodal trail uh in that urban forest, great views of the Olympics. You can see brothers from there. I'm in that forest on a regular basis with my grandchildren. Uh, and then I think there's plenty of adequate space across the street from the library on Sylvan uh and maybe even using that playground equipment. I have no idea what View Ridge is gonna be using for playground equipment at their new school. They're probably gonna get new equipment. Why couldn't we use that equipment and make our own playground over across from the library? District Two at the North End is a park desert. Our families do not have a playground to take their children to, something I've been screaming about ever since I came onto council. And I think the planets are in alignment. If we're willing to reach out and I urge the administration to be willing to reach out to the school district, reach out to the library, see while these planets are in alignment for this site development, see if we can carve out a piece of the property. We can lease it. I don't care if we own it. I don't care who owns it. We just need a publicly accessible park and playground for the families of District Two at the North End. Uh, so I'm excited. Uh, it's kind of out of my hands at this point. I'm just gonna be a cheerleader, but I'm gonna remind us all on a regular basis, planets only come into an alignment for a period of time. Uh, so let's take take advantage of this and make it happen. Let's move on. And then Bailey Tupai and his family and crew from the old Island Hut uh restaurant in the Charleston District have moved into my hood at the Perry Avenue Mall. And boy, have they done a great job. They have remodeled the old Chaos Brewery. Uh, it's all family friendly. He's got some great uh uh arcade features in there. Uh, the old Island Hut menu is there. Uh, they've got so many events already planned for this summer. Huge parking lot, food trucks, all kinds of great things. This family practices the aloha spirit with every sense of their being uh and they've brought it into my hood. I couldn't be more thrilled. Grand opening is Saturday. I'm gonna be there with my grandchildren. I I encourage everybody to come by and and meet them uh and be expecting great things. I think I do have one more uh slide with the announcement of a Juneteenth celebration. Actually, on Juneteenth, uh, celebrating black freedom. Uh, they've stepped up to host this event, so mark your calendars if you don't have already something going on June nineteenth. This is the place to be. When he names it the village, he considers that philosophy of it takes a village. Uh, and he practices that along with his crew every minute of the day. So hope to see you there, rain or shine, but hey, by the time June nineteenth comes around, we won't have any rain anymore. So come on down and and help us celebrate. And I think that's it. That's it for me.
Thank you. Um, next is District Three Council Member Jeff Coughlin.
I thank you, Council Vice President. Just leave my my title slide up there, Dave, be great. Um, wanted to thank Mr. Jackson for another great presentation on the comp plan for a ton of community outreach and uh great to see some of those uh final drafts uh just got updated this afternoon. So look forward to digging into those updates and talking about it more next week. And anyone paying attention, it's not too late to comment. Please send those those comments in. Uh, and also thank you to folks speaking up. Uh, I just want to echo the the comments on Trenton and traffic calming. I know four years ago when I was door knocking for council, um, there was an issue as well for speeding on Trenton. Um, and at the time, it was potholes on Perry. You know, everyone was fucked with the potholes. We got that road paved and now I'm hearing about speeding on Perry too. So I really do look forward to uh getting along the way to draft of a traffic calming policy. So we're not just looking at speed humps, but all sorts of other modern features to help to see what we can do there. So thanks for speaking up on that. Um, we can go to the next slide. You know, I like to report on 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 the good, but also on what's not going right in my district because I think that's important. And so I'm gonna start with the with some the items of concern. Uh, this is obviously an older picture, just downtown. Uh, I know it's taken uh a a lot of time to fill the vacant buildings in downtown and a lot of kudos goes to some business owners who have really been intrepid and and planting their stake in Bremerton. And there were two issues that came up recently I need to speak about publicly. Uh, one is a uh business that was not notified about an event um and that impacted them and their business and their patrons and then parking regarding permitting. And that is something I hope that the administration can look into to see how to to see how to avoid that in the future and to get some better communication. The other one is a bit more serious in that there is a well-known local business and a business owner who really knows their stuff, who's invested a lot of time and energy into their businesses here and got a surprise inspection last week that suddenly, although they had been operating for years and been permitted and that it was required to update a piece of equipment that was still working fine and was a part of the original sign-off when they opened their business to the tune of $7,000, which is a really unexpected business expense to be presented with. Also alarming is that they were told that their occupancy had to be reduced to a third of what it's currently listed at. And these two items, you know, I want to say I really appreciate our city staff, their hard work and that they're always looking out for public safety and that has to be a priority. But the communication to get this, these notices essentially with a surprise in 30 to 90 days change, I worry about what other businesses are impacted. I worry that if there was a code change that required a significant update like this, why it wasn't communicated. And I worry about what other businesses may face. And so there's emails in and I hope the administration can provide an update on what other businesses may be affected with these new requirements and essentially what's going on, because we have to, we have to treat our local businesses right for Bremerton to thrive here. The other slide, I couldn't let pass, if we go to the next slide here, that we just had the two-year anniversary last weekend of this council creating the Permanent Race Equity Advisory Commission. In 2013, we made it a top priority at the start of the year, put in a lot of work when the former council race equity committee was found to be essentially an ad hoc committee. It needed to be revamped to a permanent city commission and we worked hard to get that done with a lot of input from the community, former React members. And I want to acknowledge that it's now been two years without a single member brought forward to be appointed to this commission. And I know council, when we talked about it at the time, our intention was to get this commission staffed early so that it could give input into the hiring of our new diversity and communications manager and to give input into the process going forward. And we haven't had that, but it's been two years. It's way beyond time that we get some mayoral appointments to this commission. It needs to happen as soon as possible. And so if you agree with me that this commission is important to the city and to our future and to addressing inequities, historical inequities in our city, I hope you'll speak up so that we can see that happen. Onto lighted topics, the next couple of slides. I'm proud to say that the Downtown Bremerton Association has taken over the kind of summer regular cleanups that I was leading with downtown. And so they have now made it a standing, regular event on the first Thursday of every month. So folks are encouraged to come at, I believe it's 5:00 or 5:30, just RSVP'd on their website. And what's nice is they're making it a regular thing right before First Friday and then they're going out for a little social hour afterwards. So it's also a great way to get to meet your neighbors. So look out for those every first Thursday of the month. Next slide. Am I going long? Oh, 5:00 or 5:30? Yeah. I can't remember exactly. Yeah, look out for it. This is really fun. This coming weekend, we have Krampus America. It's a nationwide convention of, I'm still not sure if it's Krampuses or Krampasi, but folks interested in Krampus, which has become a big deal, especially in Bremerton, thanks to our local organizer, Eric Morley. And so there is a portion of the convention that is, you know, tickets only. But then there's this portion from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Saturday, May 10th, where they're going to have an outdoor Krampus market downtown at Fourth and Pacific. So I encourage folks to come. Come check that out and get to see some activity downtown.
Bye.
And that's right, bye, Krampus America. I think I've got one last slide. I'll quit yapping. Want to echo the mayor's comments on the ferry. I got to go on a ride as well. Really just amazing. I was blown away that this actually, when I talked to the folks, had not been implemented anywhere. Artemis was a boat racing company. And so that's where they got this hydrofoil technique that lifts the boat out of the water and minimizes the wake and now they're adapting it commercially. And the picture on the right there is one I took of, we started to take off and as soon as the hydrofoil came up, that wake went to basically nothing. And the mist created this beautiful rainbow as well and they can kind of make out there. So that was really neat. But looking forward, yeah, that mock-up on the left is 150 passengers. They have some diagrams that show a whole, you can reconfigure it for like a whole row of bikes in the back or scooters or other portable vehicles. So fantastic, it'll be fantastic solving that issue that we currently have with the fast ferries as well as minimizing the wake. That's an issue for some property owners. So yes, the future, the future is here. And I was with Councilmember Mokler and she waved to the slow ferries we passed him and she said, "Hi, we're in the future." The thought was fantastic. So, all right, that's it for me. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, District Five Councilmember Michael Goodnow.
Yeah, a couple of things I want to bring to people's attention. I don't have any slides. And so first up is, actually, I'm looking at my calendar. I just will remind folks that the Armed Forces Day Parade is next Saturday, not this weekend, but next Saturday. And, oh, you know, I'll also mention, I'll plug this. No, it's a little weird. Roxy's going to be showing the movie Greyhound, which was one of the first casualties of COVID. It's one of the first movies that didn't go to theaters. It's a big, fantastic movie. Hollywood couldn't book it for me. I had to literally go to Apple's legal team to get it. It's a big deal. It's free. Maybe the first time it's ever been on a movie screen. Anyways, but what I wanted to talk about was the, on the 17th also will be the Forest Park, Forest Ridge Park Storage Ship Day. So that's from 9:00 AM to noon. If you just need to go get grounded, put your hands, you know, on some weeds and, you know, protect the spaces up there. It's a good time. It's a great way to meet some neighbors and things like that. Again, they meet just near the kind of the main restroom playground facility. I'm not doing that to boast, because it's in rough shape. But anyways, and then I wanted to also mention that the Callo, or the Charleston Business District down on Callo has their monthly meeting. It'll be 6:00 PM on the 20th. That's on Tuesday at Typewriter Fever. And again, thanks again to staff for all you've been doing on the comprehensive plan and the presentation. And there's some light at the end of the tunnel. So that's all I have for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
Go fast now.
District Six Councilmember Anna Mokler.
Okay, so before I start, I have to make sure that the gods above have been here and that they can tell us that the weather will be fine on June 19th. And we dare and say it out loud.
She don't have to say it again.
No, it's okay. First slide, please. Slide. There we go. Great. So this is the District Six Council Report. Next slide, please. So on April 19th, there was a playground build at Lulu Haddon Park and it was cold and wet and people came out anyway. And I have to compliment Counselor Coughlin behind his back. Apparently, he also turned out and also the mayor behind his back. The mayor also showed up to help on it. But, you know, staff is going to finish up the job. But in the meantime, here's one piece of vandalism on the brand-new restroom. Next slide, please. These are the gates that close the park off. You know, I can slide through them easily. It's wide open. You can't push a stroller through it. Next slide, please. So here's some more of the vandalism at Lulu Haddon Park. Next slide, please. Back, there should be a, there's no slide. Okay. So can you go back to the fence, please? One more. There we go. So down the street from this, so the fence is on two sides. And if you had the other photo, you'd see it. But the rest of it is just silt fence, you know, like anybody can jump over it. So what we have here is a park that is closed to people who want to use it and wide open to vandals. I need to hurriedly say that this is not the fault of Parks Director Barker. He did not write the contract for securing this park. I'm just saying, here's a lousy situation. That makes it, yeah, it's just sad. Next slide, please. Are we at the end? To the Town Hall, please. There we go. So on May 12th, Chance Berthum, Stormwater Savant Utility Manager, will be talking to people about, why are my stormwater bills so high? What can I do about it? These are the questions that people ask me. What can I do to keep pollutants and nutrients from entering into Sinclair Inlet or Kitsap Lake Park? So be there or be square, 5:00 to 6:30, May 12th. Is that the end of the slides? Okay. So that is a strange thing. I was, I've been thinking a lot about the Beaver Otter Wetland at Pendergast Park and wondering how can I drum up support for this? And something that occurred to me as I was going through a million legal documents is that those are protected because they're in the public interest. And it's the same thing that we do. It's like, there's not a lobby out there saying, "We think well, nine can go another five years without replacing. Just re-line the thing." We are working in the public interest when we do that. When we do all of the things to enforce our Bremerton municipal code and to try to make it better serve the people. So that's all. It was just something I started thinking about. And then finally, even though it is no longer National Poetry Month, really six-line poem. It's by W. H. Auden. Do you guys remember him from 9/11? He's the one who wrote the poem, "September 1, 1939, We Must Love Each Other or Die." Well, right around the same time he wrote this, called Epitaph on a Tyrant. "Perfection of a kind is what he was after and the poetry he invented was easy to understand. He knew human folly like the back of his hand and was greatly interested in armies and fleets. When he laughed, respectable senators burst with laughter. And when he cried, the little children died in the streets." Thank you.
I'm going to close with District Four's report for the month. I don't have a whole lot prepared. I did want to remind everybody that is also lupus awareness month. And I have some friends and late family members who suffered with this disease. So beat up a little bit on it and find out how you can help your friends and family who may be suffering with this illness. And anyway, it's for the month of May. And then I wanted to report, I had what I would call a lively meeting, my district meeting at the Bremerton Food Line last week. Staff member Tara Burgess, she explained all the updates to the landlord licensing, which I hope everybody, especially tenants, read too, and explains a lot of everybody's roles and responsibilities and what you can do as both a landlord or a tenant to make sure that the housing that you're living in is safe. So we have it on our website. You can do an easy search for it. You can find out if the home or apartment that you're living in is licensed. And hopefully it is. But I really encourage everybody who is either a landlord or a tenant in the city of Bremerton to read this ordinance. And I just wanted to add about Island Hut. They catered a great event that I went to this weekend. And they're a treasure in Bremerton, the Tupai family. And if you don't know them, get to know them. They spread so much goodwill and help and hope throughout the community. So I hope everybody goes to this grand opening. They're just wonderful people and they've created a wonderful event space. And then I did want to comment on traffic calming in town. At every single place that I go to, where anybody knows that I'm on the city council, they complain about traffic speeds. And we can't solve it with just enforcement. We typically have two officers assigned to traffic duty and they're often investigating a severe collision that may have happened days before. So we're not out there regulating speed in that way. So I'm hopeful that with our next budget adjustment, we can direct more funds to traffic calming measures, even temporary ones, so we can try them out and see if they work before we spend a lot of money putting in permanent features. And it's something that, I'm the Chair of the Public Works Committee and the other committee members, Councilmember Coughlin and Frye, we're all in this trying to help the community, as are all the other council members, to try to make our streets safer for the people who live here. So with that, I'm going to adjourn tonight's meeting. Oh, remind you, the next study session will be on Wednesday, May 14th, beginning at 5:00 PM in the sixth-floor council conference room with a remote option available by Zoom. This concludes tonight's council meeting. Meeting is adjourned. This concludes tonight's council meeting. Meeting is adjourned.